If you'd like to join us, we're gonna have a prayer and then officially begin our meeting after that.
Good afternoon. Will you bow your head and join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. First, let me say thank you for giving us the ability to be involved in the rewarding work of representing the residents of our county. Blessed members of our combined boards present today, the superintendent, the sheriff and police chiefs, mayor, as well as various levels of our county officials in attendance, and in particular, the many first responders in the field who are assigned the awesome task of protecting us every day. Please graciously grant us the courage to make the decisions which are necessary to move our county forward, wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our residents, and most importantly, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's an honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now officially call the workshop to order. And before we proceed with official business, I just wanted to mention that the workshop time was moved up slightly to 4:00 PM. It had originally been scheduled for 5:00 PM because of the passing of a member of our community. And Ms. Studdard is going to say a few words about that gentleman, and she knew him well, so.
A sad day in Clay County when former Commissioner Larry Lancaster passed away. We did originally set this meeting for 5:00 until 8:00, but due to the fact that his visitation is tonight from 6:00 to 8:00, we arranged with the attorney to make sure that we were legal, and so we moved it from 4:00 to 7:00 so that we will all be afforded the opportunity to go to the visitation. Larry was a wonderful citizen of Clay County. He taught high school for 30, 39 years. He was an assistant principal. He served on the Board of County Commission for, was it 16 years?
16, yep.
16 years, and was a vital member of this community. On a personal note, my middle daughter, who is now an attorney, had Mr. Lancaster her senior year in high school at Orange Park High School, and she still says today that he was the best teacher she ever had in high school. So our condolences go out to his family and all that knew and loved Larry Lancaster. His legacy will live on in Clay County. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And what we're gonna do to start out is, for the roll call, I'm gonna have just each member here introduce themselves. So we'll start with Ms. Gilhousen on the end, and then work our way back this way.
Hi, I'm Ashley Gilhousen, District 5 School Board Member.
Wayne Bola, District 2 County Commission.
Mary Bola, District 4 School Board.
Diane Hutchings, District 3 County Commission.
Janice Karikas, District 1 School Board.
And I'm Gavin Rollins, District 4, the Chair of the County Commission.
I'm Carol Stutter, District 2 School Board, uh, School Board Member and Chairman of the School Board.
Mike Sella, County Commission, District 1.
Betsy Condon, School Board, District 3.
Catwood Hendry, County Commission, District 5.
And as you see, we are seated every other, and then the Superintendent and Mr. Sheriff, you guys are gonna be first up to kinda kick this off, so I'll let you guys introduce yourselves at that point. But just for the audience and for members watching, we are seated every other for a very specific reason. This is one team, one fight, and we are all 100% committed to doing the right thing for our community and for our children. And we wanted that to be a very visual representation also, that although we're gonna get into discussion on figuring out some of the specifics of how that happens, let there be no misunderstanding. There is unity in terms of our mission to support and protect our students. With that, we'll start out. Do you guys have a preference on who goes first, the sheriff or the superintendent, to kinda kick us off?
The Superintendent, I suspect.
The Superintendent?
Okay. All right, so through the Chair, thank you so very much for having us today. This is a perfect opportunity to show this community that we all have stake in the safety within our schools and also within our community. I will say, and I said it openly, that safety is just not linked to schools. This has to be a 360 accountability in the sense that each of us has to wrap our arms around, you know, our common areas in our community, our schools, and our businesses, our faith-based partnerships. We have to be ready and stand ready in order to protect this great county. For me, you know, my ask was, last week, I was able to come with the sheriff along with some board members in order to address the County Commission, each Commissioner, and discuss about our shortfalls relates to the finances related to the safety, hiring safety of resource officers within our school. I am grateful for the funding that was provided from the state legislators in reference to putting money toward resource officers. However, I've openly said this is a underfunded mandate in the sense that we did receive an additional $1.3 million from the, from the state to our school district, which brings a subtotal of $1.8 million in the arena for safe schools. However, of this $1.8 million, all of this funding cannot solely go to resource officers. There's an expectation from the state for us to look at hardening our structures, for us to look at conflict resolution strategies, for us to look at, you know, adjunct youth and special programs for kids who may be facing some mental health issues, along with looking at other improvements related to crisis and bullying within our school district. Meaning of the $1.8, I would tell you, it's probably gonna be a point where it's around $200,000 to $250,000 that we will have to expend in order to meet these recommendations per state, per auditing purposes. I will tell you openly, the $1.8 million, as I stood toe-to-toe with the sheriff to address each of you, it doesn't cover all of the resource officers needed in order to cover every school within our school district. And we're speaking of the 42 schools that are under the District Management Services along with the two additional charter schools that are under my umbrella as well in Clay County. For that being said, we had two options as a school district. We could take on hiring, you know, around 20 school, resource officers within our school district and place them at certain schools based on analytics and data, and then look to participate in the Guardian program, which allow an individual who does not have an inclusive class of students and doesn't serve students every single day, which they'll be able to carry a concealed weapon within, within our infrastructure and be there to protect. I will tell you openly that in the, in the last two weeks, the last week, that the board made a stance in the sense that they, we stood together, and also with the collaboration with the sheriff, that we saw that it'd be best practice for us to ensure that we align with state statute, meaning that we would only allow individuals under the umbrella of law enforcement in order to carry within our school district. From a practitioner standpoint and educator, I don't believe it's solid strategy to put a gun in the hands of our educators, nor the individuals that serve our students every single day. There is so much going on with the school, and it's so complex as it is, and putting additional task on those individuals regardless if they have the certification or ability to carry and the willingness to do so. I think it puts them at risk along with our students at risk as well. I am a advocate for working collectively with the sheriff's office to make certain that we have law enforcement at every one of our schools, but that will be to a point where we're here today to have a conversation about how the County Commission may work to help and assist us from a financial standpoint.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. And as far as public comment, this is, just to clarify, this is a workshop, but we will allow public comment. And, but just, just to confirm, Courtney, do we, we aren't required to allow it at the beginning of the meeting necessarily, are we?
I think we just have to.
At the end, okay. So we'll have public comment at the end of the meeting, so if you're here in the audience and like to comment, so, sure.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Sheriff Daryl Daniels. I'm, I'm in a different position than the school board, the county commission, and even the superintendent. As a CEO of the sheriff's office, I'm in a position as a, essentially a vendor or facilitator of a service, that being the safety and security of the children of Clay County when they're in the school system. I wish I had the latitude to make adjustments to my budget and make money materialize out of an unforeseen location, but I'm not in that position to do that. So all I can do is give you my position or opinion on certain matters and also lay out some facts, such as the current numbers, financials and percentages, and the projected numbers. I'm not sure if everybody up on the panel has been provided with, with this document. You have. So the document that I have in front of me speaks to the existing school resource officers and the allocation of full-time costs, including salaries, expenses, and capital outlay. Currently, the county pays for 62.47% of the existing school resource officer program. The school district pays for 37.53. I mention this because I think that the citizens need to know what percentages are being paid currently and what the dollar amounts those total up to. The county is paying currently $883,023. The schools pays $530,500. The entire budget currently is a $1.4 million budget for this, for this particular thing. Now, the projected cost to staff up school resource officers in every school is projected at $4.5 million. That projection is, is pretty accurate with not a lot of wiggle room. The personnel cost is a little over $1.5 million. The employee benefits piece to that, and, and we have to factor in the employee benefits because we can't, we can't employ employees without benefits. You know, I wish we could, but we can't. So there is also an additional cost of $340,000. With each employee comes certain equipment, uniforms, tasers, firearms, bullets, magazines, handcuffs, bullet-resistant vests, so on and so forth, that we, as the sheriff's office, has to provide, have to provide each employee. Those costs are projected at $720,000 for that many employees. And there's, then there's a capital outlay projection of $1.9 million, and that is vehicles. Gotta have vehicles for law enforcement officers to perform their function. You know, it'd be nice to think that they could come up on a bicycle or something else, but if they have to arrest somebody, they need to be able to place them inside of a vehicle. And if they have to pursue somebody, they need to be able to pursue a person in a vehicle. You know, this is just the common sense stuff. So that total totals out to $4.5 million, actually $4,513,012. Understanding with the capital outlay piece to that with vehicles, five years down the road, those vehicles have to be replaced at five-year increments. So don't lose sight of the capital outlay part of this equation. Understand that over the course of several years, we have to replace those used vehicles, which is, which is common practice here. So I wanted to make sure that we laid out certain numbers. Now, this, this 48 number didn't just materialize out of nowhere. Those 48 broken down by individuals is 36 deputies, six deputies for relief, and that has become, become a subject of question, relief. You know, who, how do you determine how many people are needed to, to, to function as a relief factor? And what do those employees do when they're not relieving somebody else? It's not like a relief person is someone who fills in when somebody goes to lunch or something like that. That's not what that means. It means if there's some unforeseen or unscheduled absence, someone is sick, someone is injured, a body has to replace that school resource officer, or I'm gonna have to pull that person from another place in the agency, i.e. patrol. So then it would be Robin Peter to pay Paul. In the absence of doing that, which is not best practice, you'd have to have some relief component. You know, it's not that these individuals who perform these functions as SROs take leave during the school year. They don't take leave during the school year. They take leave when school is not in session. So between the training, mandatory training obligations to keep a officer certified, and then leave if they choose to take that, you're talking about a very small window during a school year, during the calendar year, to facilitate that. Y'all with me so far? So it's not like we're using relief people to allow somebody to go and leave or something like that. That's not what's happening. It's only for unforeseen absences. Now, what would those people be, what would those deputies be doing when they're not relieving someone? Performing the program functions, the anti-bullying and, and the mentoring piece, the bridging the gap between law enforcement and the youth of Clay County, taking advantage of this opportunity to interact with students that is missing right now or not as enhanced in law enforcement here in Clay County. So those are the things that those people will be doing. Now, is there some wiggle room on that piece? Sure, we, I can, I can concede a couple of positions, but you're gonna put my back against the wall if, if we say, let's eliminate all relief components. That's just not best practice to do that. What does, you say, well, what does each person, let's, let's get it down to numbers, right? What does each person total up to money-wise? About $115,000 a year. So if we wiggle that back some, you're still not talking about a large number. So just keep that in mind, $115,000 a year per deputy. That's a fully outfitted, uniformed vehicle, salaries, benefits, everything. So I just wanted to make sure we broke that down. Now, then there's the one training deputy, which is, there's a full-time obligation to perform certain drills during the year, during the school year, per school. So at a minimum, at a very minimum, with 44 schools, simple math for me, times two, that's 88. If we increase that number even more, then the number grows even more. Now, you imagine one individual being tasked with doing this as a full-time function, going around facilitating certain drills. This is not just a drill, but actual exercises. That's not a one-person show. That's just a one person to facilitate the management of this piece. It has, these drills have to be, they almost mimic a real-life scenario, and the only way you can do that is using a sufficient amount of personnel, hence also including some of those relief components for that. In addition to those people I've talked about, you're talking about an additional investigator and then four sergeants. Each individual deputy has to have a supervisor. You just have to. Can't leave them unsupervised, unsupervised. So the current ratio of supervision to deputies is anywhere between 1 to 5 and 1 to 6. And we're proposing to expand that to 10 to 1. So for every 10 deputies, one supervisor. To, to save the taxpayers or to save somebody some dollars, right? If we kept those numbers 1 to 5 or 1 to 6, then you do the math, you're gonna need more supervision. So again, these numbers weren't haphazard. There was a lot of thought that went into this, and the, the base salary that was used for this formula, this financial formula of 4.5 million, was not the, the, the starting salary of 38,000 like you would start a new employee, a new deputy. Because a new deputy is not gonna be who we put in the school resource, school resource officer program. It would be negligible for me to put a brand-new deputy with, with little law enforcement experience in a setting to supervise the, the safety and security of our children. That's not my intent. My intent would be to put tenured employees, seasoned deputies into the school system to, someone who has a, a better handle on their own maturity in dealing with children and, and application of the law and how to, to, to properly apply those laws to the children in the school setting. So I just wanted to make sure that I conveyed certain numbers to the, to this body and this workshop. Also, that 4.5 million, that's the startup cost. Then there's a reoccurring cost every year. You say, okay, certainly that will go backwards. No, actually, it goes up to an estimated $5.6 million a year. So the, the, the big elephant in this room is whose strap would pay him for this? And that's why we're here today. I'm here to present numbers, and I think I did. If you have any questions about those numbers, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think that a decision is gonna have to be made, 'cause here's where we are. Either we're going in the direction of school resource officers, and I have to get these people hired and trained. Now, as it stands, I have 30 people scheduled to be, to be hired next Tuesday, if there's gonna be funding available. Because if there's not funding available, I'm gonna be pulling from my current year's budget. My current year's budget was not set to handle an additional 40 new hires. Y'all with me so far? The only alternative to that is the Guardian program option. If that be the case, then I'll need the names of the school personnel by July 1st so we can get them trained up. That's where I am.
Yeah, we'll start, do questions for either the Superintendent or the Sheriff. Commissioner Bowles?
First, a couple of questions for the Sheriff. Have we, have we thought about maybe hiring another, not a police force, Pinkerton or something like that, an outside security agency, and maybe go out, go out for bids on what this might look like just so we could get some?
The law is pretty specific.
Is it? It'd have to be sworn officers?
Either sworn or the Guardian program. There's no wiggle room on that.
There's no wiggle room.
Polk County's doing like security consultants or something, but they're sworn law enforcement? Is that how they're getting around it, or?
You know, I can't speak for Polk County.
Maybe we should take a look at that and find out how they're doing it. You start out with a 38K officer, and we ended up at, what, 100 and?
So a new employee, a new deputy, brand-new deputy, starting with the Clay County Sheriff's Office, their base salary is $38,000. Then each one of those employees has to be outfitted with certain equipment, including a vehicle, so on and so forth, those things that I listed. A tenured, five-year, five-year was the number, a five-year employee, which is a good middle of the road, someone who has plenty of time on as a deputy, and not so much time on that there aren't, they aren't valuable in that setting or an asset in that setting, was used to calculate those numbers.
Well, you came up with a number of 100 and some thousand per?
115,000.
That includes all the capital costs?
Yes.
Is that, that's what we're talking about? What is an officer with just fringe costs?
Throw, throw me the number. I got my CFO in the, in the audience here.
About 60.
60,000.
Once they're outfitted, that, that, we don't have that. Right, okay. Yeah. The supervisors, would it be conceivable to have a sergeant working in a school and also supervising like we do with our team leaders and stuff at the schools?
If, I'd say this, and I'll use myself as the example. If I'm the sheriff and I'm out there handling calls, I can't be an effective sheriff because I'm in the weeds. A supervisor could do the work of a line-level person, but are they gonna be an effective supervisor? Who are they supervising if they're doing the work of the subordinate? That's, that's the thing that we have to look at.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't pretend to know much about supervising policemen, okay? Bob, just a question. I know, I know we do that at the, at the academic level, and, okay. And as far as the equipment, is it conceivable to have a couple of these guys riding, riding the bus to school in the morning, maybe? I mean, we have, we have issues there with kids on the buses as well, and conceivably, I'm just trying to whittle, whittle this down a little bit, having a police car sitting in the parking lot all day long isn't a very good use of assets. I know when I was on the school board in 2004 and '05, we, we had a roving group of officers who would pretty much orbit the school kind of thing out of their car. And it's, if, if there was an incident and, and the police car's parked out in this, out on the, in the parking lot, he's gotta run outside and get his guns and all his heavy-duty stuff, right? I'm just wondering how that?
His gun, his or her gun should be on their hip.
Well, I'm talking, talking a bulletproof vest and, and a rifle.
That should be on their body.
Yeah.
They don't get the option of not wearing that or wearing it. And, and to piggyback on what you're saying, they could ride the bus to school, but in the event of that same emergency that you're talking about them running to the vehicle for, they don't have a vehicle to run to. They'd be just running.
They all have radios right now.
They do.
The, the $20 million we spent for radios.
However much it was.
Conceivably, we push a button and can get a response in pretty quick time.
I'll add you, I'll add another element to this scenario that you're, you're, you're bring up. Let's say they're monitoring the radio, and they will be monitoring radio every time they're on duty. If something, a violent crime happens right across the street, and that person flees from the area, they could either chase that person on foot because they rode the bus to school, or they could hop in their vehicle, their emergency vehicle, and take measures to pursue that person. Just a thought. We're limiting our capacity to be effective law enforcement officers when we eliminate one piece or any element of the equipment that we have in our toolboxes. Be like taking one of the tires off your car. You could probably drive it.
It's over twice the cost to have those cars sitting there for the whole program.
I understand.
It's 2, 2 million bucks for all the equipment.
Understood.
With the people are the important piece of this, in my mind. I don't know. I'm just, we don't have enough money to pay for everything, and I'm trying to, trying to look, explore options here that would make sense for us. And just, just a couple of comments there. That's, that's all I have for now.
Any other beginning questions before we kinda just do discussion?
I have one. Does the 18-19 cost estimate that you gave us, the 4.5 million, does that include the current staff from this year? So did that absorb the cost of the 1.4?
Yes, that also includes the existing folks.
Okay. That's all for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Sheriff, maybe you could give us an idea, because you put that idea in my head as you, you talked about there was a violent crime across the street from the school. What is, what's the scope of their responsibility going to be, each school resource officer? If they're obviously gonna go chase down somebody, do we have somebody else that's gonna be able to, to be plugged in right away?
So hence the need for supervision. So if we have a supervisor who's monitoring the activities of their deputies, and they hear a deputy leave a school, then that supervisor knows, I have to plug that hole.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, the law enforcement officer is still a law enforcement officer. They can't turn their backs to crime just because it happens off of school property. If they're on school property and a violent crime happened somewhere and it's in close proximity, we would be opening ourselves up as an agency if we turned our, if our employees turned their backs to that and said, nope, I'm only focusing on what's happening on the school property, not what's happening out there on the roadway, just outside school property. Yes, sir. So yeah, to answer your point, yeah, there would be an immediate response of somebody coming to fill those shoes until that person got back.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Chief Asdott, I know that there's members of the public that want to speak, but do you, did you have on the law enforcement side, is there something you want to add? I'll, I'll allow you to come speak, and I'd love for your input, you know?
Sir, Chief Asdott, Green Cove Springs Police Department. Thank you for inviting us here today. Hey, Sheriff. Council, I know you all have a tremendous task in front of you. You know, thank you for the legislation to come down from the governor's office for this bill. It's obviously, it's a step in the right direction. By no means does it make us whole, we all understand that. You know, I don't envy the position. The sheriff has an incredible job in front of him with all the schools he has, it's a large jurisdiction. One thing I think that maybe we can bring as far as Green Cove, and I won't speak for Chief Goble, he'll be able to address it himself, but something maybe we could help and look at and see what the allocations might be, what this is gonna look like on the end term, and our mayor's here would be able to speak to some of that also, to see maybe if, if the Green Cove, you know, we can pitch in this thing and try to, do our, our part, add some officers to that, because this is, the sheriff said, that's an enormous task, and it's not only while they're at the school, it also has to do with everything else that goes with it, the relief factors, the fact that they're there, you know, during the school year, and the training thus that goes into it, it's an integral part of it. So it's something that has to be done. I think it's, something is long overdue, and I think, you know, collaboratively, we can get this done between the council, the sheriff's office, and respective agencies. I think it's absolutely doable. So, you know, thank you for the ability to be here and be part of the discussion, we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate. Any questions for the chief?
Chief, are you involved with any of the schools currently in Green Cove Springs?
No, ma'am. We're not, we don't have an officer, any SROs in the schools. However, I'm sure, being on school board, you're familiar, we're in the schools all the time. We have an enormous school program. We're in there, we average about four hours a week in the schools, and of course, there's other things that we do. So we're always in Charles E. Bennett and the junior high. I will tell you, we're not in Bannerman quite as much because the sheriff has a deputy over there, so I think the duplication of resources probably isn't as well-placed as it could be. But as far as Charles E. Bennett and the junior high, we have a tremendous standing within the school and a great relationship.
All right, thank you so much.
Chief, one question.
Let me ask, I wanna make sure I'm understanding you. So you're saying with, as far as the SROs and the state mandate and so forth, you're saying that perhaps y'all could cover the SROs in the two schools in the city limits of Green Cove?
Yes, what we'd like to say is to see if there's something that's doable, absolutely. If it's something that I would say, I would love to have that, obviously, that's a discussion the city council has to have to see if it's financially, if it's something that they could do. And I think in doing that would help the sheriff because that would lessen his burden. He has an enormous burden on his burden. He has an enormous burden on him to do the whole county. I don't, I don't envy his position because that's going to be a very tough job to do and it's going to, you know, come down and you all know because you have to make the decisions where the funding source is going to come from and the mechanism to get there. So.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to help Mr. Bowles because we're trying to find ways to cut that 4.5 down. So Sheriff Daniels, there's two schools right there. So we could, we're reducing.
Potentially.
Is anyone here from?
Orange Park.
The mayor?
Maybe.
Mr. Timberlake, would you like to, Mr. Mayor, the mayor of Green Cove Springs?
Yeah. We don't want to put you on the hot seat, but.
But how much are you, how much are you putting in the offering plate?
Trying to put a man aside.
Exactly, yeah.
Hayward, I got an idea.
If you're willing to give us money, then you, you definitely can speak.
We can knock those schools off real quick.
If there's anyone in the audience who's willing to give money, then please turn in your card now.
So again, Mitch Timberlake, I'm the mayor of Green Cove. I didn't get the note ahead of time, so I didn't dress appropriately. My apologies on that. Mr. Studdard, I'll remind you, the citizens of Green Cove pay taxes just like every other citizen in the county. So we are not looking to step up and fund the process. What I think the chief was alluding to is our officers already have a strong presence in the community, in the schools, tremendous relationships with the students, and it would seem to be a logical starting point to use those officers to continue that process and to pick up this additional SRO responsibility. That said, what the city, I think, would be looking for is whatever allocation you come up with on a per-school basis via inter-local agreement is transferred into the city of Green Cove to offset our additional cost of hiring officers to staff those types of positions.
Absolutely.
It would seem to me that that would make good sense from our perspective. We have the same requirements in terms of additional personnel, cars, equipment, et cetera, maybe not quite to the same extent that the sheriff does, but I think everybody has to remember those same things that the sheriff outlined would be present at the city of Green Cove and should the city of Orange Park choose to follow suit in the same regard, they, they would each have those types of obligations. I think the other piece is, and it's the one that strikes out first to me, is there is a bit of a jurisdictional issue. Our officers already have responsibility for operating within the city limits of Green Cove. I know the sheriff also provides coverage there, but I think we are first. Today, when, when an incident occurs in a school in Green Cove, the city gets a call.
Right.
Ultimately, it goes to the county and to the sheriff. I would go so far as to say, I think the city would say we would cover the two, the elementary school, the junior high school, and we could do Bannerman. But again, that assumes that the allocation on a per-officer basis is transferred to the city to offset those costs.
Okay. So what you're saying is you, you would have the manpower for those three, so that would be three that he doesn't have to hire and train?
And, and I will.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We still have to pay for it.
Through the chair.
We'd still be paying for it, but it would save you having to hunt three more people.
I, I hear where this is going. I'd be cautious about going down that road. One, I would want to know from this body, I would want to know, what, what is the cost of a Green Cove Springs police officer? Are we talking about a new one? Are we talking about a tenured one? What is the salary of an Orange Park police officer, a tenured one versus a new one? And, and compare the costs first. Have we done that?
Well, and I, I think that, just to clarify, this is a workshop. So we're kind of narrowing in on the focus and obviously, time is pressing, but this is, we're not going to make any decisions, official decisions tonight. We're discussing different options. And so it sounds like what they're saying, even if it's not a specific number amount, is they, they want to help in any way they can. And so that'll certainly be factored in and maybe we can figure out the specifics on some of those questions that various ones have moving forward. Does that sound reasonable?
Now, to Commissioner Bowles' point, and I'll come back to this, is I'm not suggesting, because we only have three schools, that, and chief, maybe I'm putting you on the spot, I don't think we would need to have additional sergeants and things of that nature because we could supervise those additional personnel with existing staff. So that may be an area, and again, I'm not trying to cut into, into your game. That's not my objective today. It's simply to say, we have great relations between our police department, the community. It's first-rate. They do a phenomenal job. And it seems to me to make good sense to put people that do a great job, already have a presence, already have relationships in that position.
All right. Thank you. Thanks so much. I'm going to go ahead and, yeah.
So through the chair, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to ask your question. So back to the original conversation that Chief Asdott just talked about. So, so I know a superintendent from your side of it. You may, are you saying that you, there's no ability to go back to the city council and ask for financial relief to service those schools or the, or is the stance just if you want a portion of the allocation in order to, to serve the schools you're already in, supporting the schools?
So I would answer your question with a question.
Okay.
You're getting money from the state.
We are.
You will probably deal with some kind of a tax increase or an assessment of some kind to the citizens to cover the additional cost. Our citizens pay those taxes. So no, I don't think the city would be in a position of saying, we're going to provide additional funding. Our citizens are already paying for that.
Yes, sir.
And should there be an increase in school board fees, taxes, et cetera, our citizens will also pay those taxes.
I appreciate, just wanted to be clear because.
Understood.
From all of us, it's, it, you know, from superintendency, safety isn't, is not solely on the schools and it will take all of us as well. We're here to have the conversation.
Understand. And that's why I said, whatever, whatever tax implications there are, our citizens will pay those taxes, just like every other citizen in the county.
All right. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and allow Ms. Strato, keep it to the focus of the topic, but he's turning a card. And if there's any other members of the public who would like to, to speak at this point, you can.
Yes, sir. James Otto, 2904 Blending Boulevard, Sex and Buds, Clay County, Florida Hotels. You know, first, I hope I can say, you know, prayers to the people that died, you know, great teachers helping, even babysit kids' kids. Wow, wow, what a tremendous person she was. With all due respect to the Sheriff Daniels, I was at the other meeting and he said a third of the population about is going to be in the schools. So is there really a need for 48 officers? Or you could take some, I'm hearing something about taking them out of the schools. If we're paying them for the, be in the schools, then they should be in the schools. If there's an incident near the school, I would think you would have the officers in the school for the reason why we're putting them in the school. Right? I'm not sure how far away he's saying, but then, you know, this has been coming for a long time. I'd ask people to go back and look at the last few meetings on streaming video. You know, I'll, I'll comment more on that later on at public comment.
Ms. Strato, this is the public comment portion, so.
At the end of the meeting, there's public comment. This is number one.
This is the public comment. We're doing it now. Moved it up because we wanted you to be able to share your thoughts.
Okay, so the, the school, the school police cars, I don't see why we couldn't put five-year-old cars in the schools because they're not going to really be driving unless they're called off on another. I'm sure they're still good enough to be used after five years. With the bomb threats, we need to be talking about dogs in our schools because this isn't gonna, this isn't going to do it just having the officers there. And that'll help with the opioids. I don't know if the dogs can smell the opioids, but they can definitely smell the heroin. So if you could look at that, talk about the dogs today. And so I'd like people to go back and look at the meeting yesterday with Mr. Sella, who wouldn't allow us to speak at the end of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it's our topic.
When I spent time, excuse me, sir.
Excuse me.
He said it's about the quality of life for Omega Park.
Focus on, on the issue on, at hand. This is a workshop on a specific issue.
It says public comment after number one item. So you said that you're not allowing us to speak at public comment at the end of the.
You are speaking right now. This is public comment, so.
Right. You said to keep it on the agenda item, but there's an agenda item and there's a public comment.
This is the public comment portion.
And you're telling me to keep it to the agenda item, but the public comment is to talk about anything. So.
This is a workshop, so it's not a normal kind of commissioner.
Coming back to the public comment thing, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bowles who allowed us to speak on the agendas at the time of the agenda. And that's the way we should have it, like Mr. Davis, Travis Cummings, not the way the boards are doing it today where the public isn't allowed to speak. You know.
You have 10 seconds left, Ms. Strato.
All right. Well, I think it's a shame that, that you're taking our constitutional right of freedom of speech. The attorney said that you only have to have the one, but she didn't say that you only had to have the one.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Strato. Is there any other member of the public that would wish to comment? I don't believe public comment is even required in a workshop. We just do so because we do want to gain input from the public. So thank you for those who shared with us. Returning to the discussion, the item, now is kind of the unstructured portion where we can ask questions of the sheriff and superintendent or have discussion and.
I, I have a question. Is anyone here from the town of Orange Park?
Chief Goble.
I would like for him to come up. I would like to hear your latest, best and greatest offer to us. I mean, as a resident of the town of Orange Park, I'm extremely interested. Now, what do you have right now?
Well, right now, we have, the only person we have in our schools are the, is the elementary schools. We have a DARE program that is funded by the school board.
Is it still at OPE and?
We do it at both elementary schools.
And Grove Park?
There is not an SRO at the junior high. So we have three schools, three public schools within the, the town of Orange Park.
Okay.
We, we also want to be part of the conversation.
Right.
To see if, if we could help, if, if the council is even amenable to, to helping or to placing us in the schools or whatever that conversation becomes. We, we just really started talking about this yesterday. And even if we did need the officers, we'd be competing with the sheriff's office trying to hire people because that's going to be a huge task, hiring people and getting them in the schools. But we did want to be part of the conversation.
And that's what I wanted you to come up here and say.
Okay.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know. Everybody's going to work together to solve this problem.
Question. Chief Goble, could I ask you a question, or maybe it's the superintendent, just for the spirit of transparency, do you know what we spend for the?
$9,000 a year.
$9,000. And that's part of the current safe school allocation that we would still maintain, correct?
Through the chair. Yes, ma'am. Right now, we spend $9,000 with the town of Orange Park along with $9,000, the Green Cove Police Department as well, and that's through the safe schools money.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, I'll try to, you know, maintain as, as much as possible, kind of like my classroom organized chaos where we're, it's an engaging learning environment. But let's kind of take it down in terms of structure where you, let's just start having a discussion, ask questions, that type of thing. So whoever wants to lead off?
Can I lead off through the chair?
Yes, sir.
And I, I respect my brothers in law enforcement being here. If you recall, not the school board members, but the commission, I came up here and I spoke to y'all and I talked about my intent to put school resource officers in the junior high schools. Remember that conversation? And because I wanted to make sure that we had coverage in the senior high schools and the junior high schools at a minimum. And those, those plans kind of fell apart because we, we weren't recipients of the grant. Now, in as much as I appreciate my buddies coming here, I didn't hear from them about the school resource officer program or putting their people inside of the schools that fell in their jurisdiction back then. But now suddenly now, it, it's a conversation. I, I welcome them, but it could muddy the waters when it comes to the continuity of span of control and things like that. I just make sure that, and they probably need to be up here at the table. They, they really shouldn't be out in the audience. They really should be having seats up here at the table, side by side with, with me, because they represent other law enforcement agencies in this jurisdiction and really shouldn't be a sidebar or an afterthought. They really need to have a seat at the table. But when it comes to where we were going in this county, I just, I just, I'm not understanding why I didn't hear from them then when we were trying to shoulder the burden of putting school resource officers in these rest of these schools. And, and maybe they can, maybe you guys can answer that. It's not to put you on the spot. It's just like.
I can answer from my, from my perspective.
Please.
Well, Sheriff, I appreciate that.
Would you put it to Mike?
Thank you.
No, Sheriff, I appreciate that. What I could say is from the Green Cove's perspective, I've been the chief since October, so I wasn't prepared for that conversation. However, that's something that wholeheartedly we would like to do. And I agree, I think we should have been brought in on the front end of this because I don't know how many discussions you're in, but obviously, this is our first one. I will tell you, I did send an email when this first happened to, you know, let the superintendent know that I was interested and just, we'd like to be included in the discussion. So, and that is what it is. But no, I think absolutely pull up on the same direction on continuity from, you know, add on to what you said. I think you're absolutely right. But I think the continuity is jurisdictional because the kids at Charles E. Bennett and Green Cove Junior High, majority of them walk to school. They're in the city of Green Cove Springs. So any cases or anything of loss from the school, they carry over. Our officers are working. So I think from a continuity standpoint, I wholeheartedly agree, but I think it's, the other side of that coin is it benefits us to be in those schools.
When it sounds like the superintendent's question was to kind of clarify the specifics of who, which officers, whether, which jurisdictions are providing the service, it sounds like that the school districts ultimately still paying roughly the same bill. So we, I think we can move forward with a discussion on how that looks regardless of the specifics of letting the professionals who are in law enforcement figure out that side of it in terms of the specifics. We still have to figure out that gap in funding. So.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification. I do know that in the bill, for whatever reason, the legislature, legislature specifically designated the 1.1 million that Clay got for additional school resource officers as sheriff's deputies. And the, the question that I have been in a number of different conversations with different school board members across the state and different organizations is there, there is a question as to whether in the legislative eyes, that was an oversight, that they didn't mean to exclude other police organizations, or if it was intentional. However, we do have that as part of it. Now, that's not the whole amount of money. That's only the additional 1.1 million that specifically designated under school resource officers.
Through the chair, I'm not sure about that, but like in, in some counties, just to give you some perspective, in some counties, there may be 47 to 50 different jurisdictions in one county. Now imagine if, you know, every one of those municipalities wanted to stand up an SRO. It could be kind of confusing. We, we had a different environment here. I, if they want to shoulder up and take care of Green Cove proper and Orange Park proper, I think we could pull it off. And it makes sense. So don't think we're at odds. It, it makes sense, especially the, the kids already, especially if the kids already know the officers, it would make sense. And take, probably take some of the burden off, off of us as the sheriff's office.
I, I think it's really important that Green Cove, Orange Park, and you worked together on this. And I, I know you're fine gentlemen and y'all can work it out. We were just trying to find some way to get a little relief from the burden that we have up here. So that's one thing that'll save a little bit, hopefully.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, operationally, I think, you know, the sheriff and the chiefs can get together and figure that out.
Sure.
We have a long road to hoe before we get to, to that point where they figure out who's going to cover which, which school and where their paycheck is coming from.
Where and how.
That's a whole different story. So, so I, I think, you know, chief, both chiefs, we appreciate that. Mayor, we appreciate the fact that you guys are interested in working with the sheriff and all of us because we are all in one county and we all have the, you know, one responsibility. And, and Sheriff, it wasn't that we didn't want them at the table. The table is only so big. So we put them right in the front row where we, we could see them and get to them easily.
And this conversation's new for everyone at this point in terms of the specifics. So it's a fairly new conversation, generally speaking.
Yeah. So I, I mean, you know, let's, let's, let's let the gorilla out of the cage. I mean, the bottom line is it's the dollars and cents.
Yep.
And, and a lot of them, both boards are in the same or similar situation, having tapped reserves, us for storm coverage for a period of two years or more. And then you folks have had some other things in your budget that have made you move to, to tap reserves. So neither group is, is sitting here with a, you know, a pot at the end of the rainbow in terms of gold. So where do we go forward and where do we get additional revenues? That's, that's what I think has to be on the table at this point.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When does your budget year start?
It's the same cycle. So we'll start workshops in the summer and then September 1st is, or 30th, is it, we have to finalize?
So through the chair, it sounds like they're a little different than we are because we are, we are July 1 fiscal start.
And yours is when?
October 1.
I think, I think October 1.
The differences we don't approve on.
And through the chair, originally, that's what I was trying to figure out, what the 1.5 million dollars, and it does compensate for the next six months of employees because it sounds like the sheriff's budget ends in, on, in the September, beginning of October.
And, and this causes a little confusion. Ours is July 1. The bottom line is, and I watched the meeting a couple of weeks ago. The bottom line is, and I watched the meeting a couple weeks ago to kind of see where the conversation, because I knew that Mr. Davis was coming to speak. I had a surgical procedure that day and could not be here, but I've watched it.
Glad you're okay.
Oh, I'm good. It was minor, but I did watch it because I wanted to see the conversation. But let's get to the bottom line. Mr. Davis stated that we've got 1.5 million and we don't have any more. We had, we were getting like five, 550,000, and then we got an additional 1.3. So, that gets us up to 1.8. Dr. Legutco, our finance assistant superintendent, said that almost 300,000 has to be used for a bullying program, whatever. So, that gets us back to the 1.5. So, I'd like...
I do have a question on that funding, if I might. So, the 300,000, does it specify, could that be, because it's a training program, could that be covered by the deputies, the training component?
So, the, through the chair, you're talking about the safe school money?
Talking about the 300,000 bullying.
The 300,000 that the chairwoman referred to.
So, right now, you have to, you have to exhibit the 1.8 million dollars that you're not solely giving the entire funding set to resource officers, meaning that you've got to exhibit that you're doing stuff for mental health, to look at anxiety, to look at bullying, to do crisis. And for us to implement such programs, it's going to cost around 200 to 200,000, 250,000, I would say, bringing us to at a 1.55 to be able to administer toward resource officers. If we took the entire 1.8 and placed it toward resource officers, I'd love to do that. However, I know this board, I say, the school board would not like for us to have audit findings, and we're just trying to stay mainstream in reference to the expectations through the state.
I just, obviously, the training has to be provided. I think the question is, can a deputy provide some of that, the components of the safety training?
Through the chair, deputies could perform some anti-bullying training. And just for the sake of the clarification, the number I have is 1.891 million. Is it 1.891 million or is it 1.8?
Or overall?
Yes.
It's 1.8, so it's, and it could, give or take, I don't know where my CFO is, it's, I know we got 580,000 last year, and we got another 1.3 added to that.
Yeah.
The numbers that I saw were 1.891 for Clay County. I just want to make sure we're dealing with real...
Ms. Legutco, did you want to clarify?
If I may, to the microphone.
If you can come to the microphone, just so we can have it on the record for...
Hello, Dr. Legutco, Clay County School Board CFO. The actual number as of right now, projected to receive by the school board is 1,891,874.
Okay.
And how much of that has to be used for the safe schools that...
Again, it's about 250,000.
That's correct.
Set aside for the bullying part of the component for safe school, for the activities for that categorical funding. The remainder can go towards the SROs.
And is this separate, just for my clarification, because we have not gotten to talk about this as a overall school board yet, does this include the, I believe it's 900,000 that we have to put toward mental health as well?
Through the chair, it is separate and isolated. So, there's a 900,000, it's solely dedicated and categorical for mental health?
Mental health, okay.
And it's, this is, the safe schools has over and beyond with mental health and crisis bullying and...
Right.
And crisis management, so this is over and beyond.
Okay.
So, that pocket money is categorical and cannot be used in this manner.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I did have a couple other questions if, I saw an article, I think Senator Bradley shared it, that he fought hard for compressing, compression, and basically reducing the district cost differential that would result in, I'm not sure the exact numbers, but what is that going to result in, in an increase for the school district this year?
Through the chair, I'll start and then I'll let the tag team partner go. So, yeah, we are greatly appreciative of the work from Senator Bradley and the Appropriations Committee to fight for additional funding for Clay County District Schools. I will tell you, there is 1.7 million sitting in that pocket. This is about differentials related to the state. If you look at the FTE formula in reference to what are, what we're getting from a district from an average perspective, what they did is, I think a year ago or so, Volusia County started to have great concerns that they were not being funded at the average of the state. So, with that mindset, the state went back and they looked at appropriations and they identified twenty-plus school districts in order to move their funding up toward the requirements to the state average. So, that allocation is a differential to put us at a competitive standpoint throughout the state, and we're definitely appreciative of the work that Senator Bradley did to help us do that. I will tell you openly, we selected an FTE model for us because we have to select a student enrollment model that builds or projects and builds our budget for the eighteen, nineteen school year. In the model, we selected a model that was close to our current enrollment. Right now, we have 37,000 students in Clay County under our umbrella, and we selected a model that was at 37,455, meaning that right now, we are over appropriated by around 400-plus students. Through our internal numbers, we are projected to lose 300 students, so now we have 800 students that we may not be able to have received funding for. So, that 1.7 and all the, and the eight million dollars we received from the state may have to be very well shifted back to the state if we don't have the FTE money, if we don't have the students that come to our seats in the first ten days, which means that I do not, as a professional and practitioner, want to identify that certain identified funding and pin it towards resource officers when I may have to eventually be in the hole due to enrollment and hand that money back to the state.
When would that happen to happen, the second calculation or...
It happens throughout the year. We have two calculations, the October count and the February count. And based on those, the enrollment numbers, our figures are adjusted based on that information.
But in theory, you guys would receive it and then have to give it back if the enrollment didn't.
Correct. Right now, we're projected, the numbers I gave you are all projected numbers in hopes that the students that we project will show up at the schools. Throughout the year, our first count in October, we pray, of course, that those students are there, and then we, our calculation is based on the estimate. We receive half of the funding throughout the year based on that number. After the February count, the state adjusts our numbers and pretty much adjusts our revenue source to those, to that enrollment. And at the end of the year, we're shored up with every kind, all the other adjustments that happen, such as virtual schools, they take some money from a state virtual, they'll take some money McKay. Those kids are funded through our funding, but it's sent out to other...
The FTE light, where, yeah, if you get all the different pieces, it used to be a whole once.
Exactly. So, at the end of the year, we may say that we're getting this, but we could get less or we could get more. It just depends.
And through the chair, one more thing I'll say is, that's soft money. We are not guaranteed to have that money in the future, which means that if I stand up and recommend to the board that we put that soft money on salaries and we do not get it, then we're back in the hole once again. So, it's just not sound practice in order to pin ear that money towards salaries because it won't have systemic impact in reference to moving that needle with the funding.
Sure. Well, it sounds to me like that the challenge is the timing piece on a lot of this funding. And so, I think that since we're all committed, I'll just kind of start out with a suggestion and we can go from there and discussion that. But since we're all committed to protecting our students, doing whatever it takes to make that happen, but it sounds like the school district is in some difficult situation in terms of the timing on paying for all this, that the county commission could propose some sort of funding gap in the form of a loan through an interlocal agreement. And so, that would give you guys the ability to stand up the program, but it would be with a clear understanding that as other mechanisms for funding come into existence, that that money would be paid back to the school district over a period of time. And in that way, that gives us the ability as commissioners to justify that, because we have lots of needs and priorities too. I look out among us and I'd sure love to give funding for raises for the sheriff's deputies. They do amazing work. And our firefighters and all the different aspects, there's roads crumbling, there's buildings crumbling, there's a thousand priorities that we all know, I won't belabor that point, but we certainly have many, many priorities that are vital and important to the residents of Clay County. But it sounds like what we're really dealing with here, the challenge is the timing in all of this. And if the county was able to provide, because I understand a little bit about how the fund balance works in terms of the 3% number and the state and control of the school district and that type of thing, so I understand that the school district would not want to go below 3% in terms of their fund balance. So, if the county were to offer a loan with an interlocal for that to be paid back over a period of time, I think that would give all of us some breathing room. I mentioned to the sheriff that this reminds me of, there was an operation the Israelis did to rescue hostages in Entebbe, Uganda, and they hadn't gotten final approval on the operation, but they knew that time was of the essence. And so, what they did is the military launched the C-130s from Israel flying south towards Uganda and Africa, and while the planes were in the air, the prime minister and his cabinet started debating the issue. And then it wasn't until halfway into the journey that the Israeli commandos who were on that raid knew that they actually had approval. And had they had not gotten approval, they ought to turn around and go back, but they got approval. And so, I think that's kind of where we're at. The sheriff's office is, you know, the plane is in the air, we just have to make the decisions. And a loan would allow that operation to go forward and to move forward, because time is of the essence. But then, over a period of time, it would give the school district the ability to come up with some of those additional funds, so.
Does the county...
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Davis?
I'll let Ms. Condon then.
I just was going to ask if the county is in a position to continue the sheriff's number of 883,000, or, I'm sorry, maybe that was, yes, that was the sheriff's number, right? You said the county pay, currently pays 883,023 dollars?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and so, I was, so my question is, is the county in a position to maintain that?
I don't want to speak for all commissioners, but I think, I mean, we just recently reapproved that, so I think we're committed to maintaining that for sure. That's a non, is that...
Well, for myself, I feel like my thoughts before I came have just been validated by Mr. Davis's comments and the sheriff's comments. This is not a once and done. This is something that, number one, is the top priority of government. We are supposed to protect our citizens.
That's right.
The smallest to the oldest. So, number two, I think it needs a dedicated funding stream. The Board of County Commissioners is not responsible for the school board function, and this is clearly a school board function. We've been participating up until this point, but I would rather participate by asking you all to get a dedicated funding source through Ad Valorem, and we'll support you. We'll encourage and support that. Then, you know the money's there, there's no more point in who's going to pay for it this year, it's taken care of. And I cannot imagine the people of Clay County not supporting that. Nobody wants our children to not be protected, and it's important enough, it should stand on its own, and that's going to be my position, that we rethink everything. And when I talk about the Ad Valorem, I mean, I'm also talking about freeing up some space in your budget. Your crossing guards could be paid that way, you know, a lot of your school hardening could be paid, I mean, there's a lot that we need to just set that apart and be committed that this is going to get taken care of, and it's not going to be whatever our funding is this year, no. It's a priority and we set it aside, and we've looked at Monroe County, I'm assuming you all have looked there, that's the direction, I think, sets the tone to the public that we're committed and we need you to be committed, and we all need to work together on it. So, that's going to be my position.
I think I was referring just to this year for specific on that.
Yeah.
That only because that agreement has kind of already been approved. But yeah, looking forward, that certainly, I think, is, makes sense and is something that is reasonable.
I'd like to say something. Thank you. You know, the school district is in the business of educating children. We, and we do a very good job of it, and the sheriff's office and the Board of County Commission, the sheriff's office is in the business of keeping our community safe. Sheriff Daniels, you do a wonderful job, and our chiefs in Orange Park and Green Cove, you do a great job of keeping our community safe. The school district, our schools are a focal point of the community. We have sporting events, we have parents dropping kids off, there's all kinds of activity going on, we have vendors coming on, we have mentors coming on, so we need to have them kept safe. And safety falls under our sheriff's department, our sheriff's office. And it sounds to me like we're saying we're going to work together, but your suggestion is a loan and your suggestion is an Ad Valorem tax, we're not really working together. Working together would mean the school district searches for whatever additional funds they could find, and the county commission comes up with funds that they could find, and the sheriff maybe finds a couple of positions that you could maybe eliminate here and there that aren't as, I know they're all necessary, but maybe one or two, and that's working together, that's compromise. That's, you know, we say we have 1.69, whatever the number was, million dollars, maybe we can stretch it to two, maybe we can find that little bit more, and maybe the county commission can go in that, you know, the sales tax that's been extended for thirty years, or the gas tax or something somewhere, and come up with some money to help. And maybe, like I said, Sheriff Daniels, you could eliminate, you know, one or two positions somewhere that would save a few hundred thousand dollars. That's a compromise, and that's what, I think that's what we're here for. We're here to ask, how are we going to be able to fund it? And what can the county commission do to help us, the school board, who's in the business of educating our children? We are not in the business of law enforcement, that falls under the sheriff. We are not, it's not like we're a for-profit agency, we're a governmental agency who, you know, needs to be kept safe. We're not like a credit union that hires an off-duty police officer to keep our lobby safe.
County attorney, if you don't mind, I had a couple of questions for you on this. Yeah, if you don't mind, sorry to...
I guess I was done, excuse me. Go right ahead.
Well, I was just giving her a heads up, but you can keep going.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
You have a question, go right ahead by all means.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, in your reading of the bill, who is legally responsible for paying for school safety?
I think it would be the school board.
It's very clear in Florida statute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, that's what I was going to chime in and say that too. The law specifically names, if it named the sheriff, then it'd be one thing, it says clearly, "school board." So, the school board's the owner of the school resource piece, the school safety piece is owned by the school board.
Chairman Rollins, would you give her a chance to finish her statement?
Sure.
You know, it's just, it's shameful, that's what it is. It's shameful that we're not all willing to work together, and I hope that we can. I hope that, like I just said, the district can find more money, the county commission can find some funds that can help. That's what I was asking for, that we actually work collaboratively together.
Well, we are. That's, I think, what we're offering is a loan that would help get through the tough shortfall at this point, and then down the road, look at future stuff.
I don't see that as helpful. I don't see that as taking part of the responsibility, which is what I think the county commission needs to take.
That's unfortunate that you don't find that helpful, but I think that will pay for deputies.
Some of the responsibility for the safety and law enforcement for our community.
If I could ask the sheriff, would, if a loan was provided, that would pay the bills while we get this program off the ground, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, sorry, so through, sorry, I might say something, that makes you be unrespectful.
Mr. Benjamin.
Yeah, so, thank you, sir. So, through the chair, I mean, I appreciate it. I mean, for us to even get here this afternoon and take your time to talk about being a problem solver with our work, I am grateful for it. It sounds like to me at this stage that me and the school board will probably need to branch off and to revisit our expectations for what we will have to do. I know originally, we made a statement in reference to whether or not the Guardian program will come into play at this stage without, you know, any assistance and funding, and I openly don't even believe that we can even reach out to legally do a loan, take a loan out, only for our debt services can you take loans out, but...
Being interlocal, so it, our attorney has confirmed it is very much legal and possible, so.
Okay, I'll have to, I appreciate it. I didn't know, through our CFO, we've only ever done debt services. But from our side, it sounds like that we would need to circle back as a board and a superintendent and figure out if we do take additional steps for additional revenues and if we use the 1.5 million openly to cover, you know, X amount of schools, and then figure out if we will either take on a model as Duval County did, where they just hired school safety assistants who will be carried in focus point, or transition to the Guardian program. So, it sounds like it's kind of where we are in this point. It's not a favorable point. We understand that you're faced with difficulties as well, and we appreciate and understand it. You know, Commissioner Rollins talked about our financial status, and he's been in the You know, Commissioner Rollins talked about our financial status, and he's been in the school system, so he understands we struggle a little bit, and we're in a better spot than we were under my leadership in the last 17 months. And then, we do have some unexpected categoricals, such as the county commission does. But it sounds like at this point that we'll probably need to circle back, determine our next steps as a board, and then from there, and if the board, if I'm incorrect, please let me know, from there actively engage the sheriff about our next steps and what we're willing to do in order to comply with a mandate.
Just a comment. So what I'm hearing you say is, you're, you don't feel like the public would support having a tax to keep our children safe?
Oh, through the chair, I honestly believe that will happen. I believe that the public will stand strong beside us and stand behind using, whether it's a millage increase, or whether it's a, well, it has to be a millage increase, because you can't use, you can't use, you know, penny tax to put on salary. So I wholeheartedly agree and believe that that, that the community will stand beside us. The issue is, is that the, you know, the board will have to decide if this is in their aspirations to move forward with it. But I do agree.
Well, help me understand your reluctance, then. Is it just that y'all haven't discussed it?
We have not. We have a workshop to discuss it. We just brought it up in the, in the last, in our last board agenda review. We talked about bringing, looking at additional revenues, and it's, we wanted to have this meeting first before we transitioned to the next meeting, so it's on the table to make it happen, but it is a priority, I promise you.
Well, just for myself.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like the way we go about it currently, and I have felt this way for some time, is very piecemeal.
Yes, ma'am.
So the thought of having that dedicated revenue that we all agree, and I collaboratively believe that that's us coming together in the community and saying, these millions right here, nobody else can use them for anything else, this is for the students.
Yes, ma'am.
So whether, I guess what I'm hearing you say, Ms. Carrickus, is you want us to raise the millage, and that's the only fair thing?
No, I'm not asking you to raise the millage. I'm asking you to just look in your budget now and see if there's something that you have that you can contribute towards resource officers.
And my comment to that would be, we do not have this amount of money just laying around in our budget.
I know, and neither do we.
Yeah, we don't. So we've got, and I applaud y'all for not going with the Guardian program. I think this is the best practice. It's probably the most expensive way to go. But I think that the public has confidence in our leaders, and in how the money's going to be spent, that we can surely come together and work together toward educating the public and getting the support for that. So I would say that we are collaborating, and I would hope my fellow commissioners would express their concerns or.
Commissioner Henry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, we all know, everyone in the room knows that it's not the school board, and it's not the BCC, and it's not the sheriff's office that's going to be paying for these SROs, it's going to be the public, the citizens out there paying the tax. Now, our question is, who's going to step up and ask for more money? Is it the school board, or is it the BCC? And I've heard a couple of good ideas already. Obviously, the millage has got to go up. Now, who, are we going to do it from the school board's side by referendum, or is the BCC going to do it? School board's got a little bit, a better ability to do this, because right now it's lower. Ours is already inching up there to the max. And again, I agree that it's probably, in the long run, it's a school board function to make this thing work. So in my opinion, it should be the school board that puts this on a referendum come to fall, to see if they can get another half mill or a mill squeezed out of the citizens for a worthy, worthy cause. And we would support it, as has already been said. And we stand ready to jump up with some cash to help this thing get kicked off, to make sure that we're ready to go here in the timeline that the sheriff has given us. But that money that we're tapping into, it's semialready been dedicated to other projects. That would, we would need that to come back to us in some form over some period of time. I think that's where the term "loan" got put in there. But we're ready to make this work. But again, it's going, it's going, it's going to need a higher millage rate from the citizens, and I think, in my opinion, the school board's in better shape to ask for that raise than the BCC is.
And the county commission already of the one cent sales tax provides a discretionary, it's not required, provides 10% of that capital funding to the school district, and so.
Would you like to clarify that, Mr. Davis?
Go ahead, sir. I'll.
He said we got 10%.
Am I incorrect in that?
It's a little less, but we're appreciative, through the chair. It's my understanding.
It's like over 2 million a year, I believe.
My understanding is that it's.
Dr. Legutko, do you have clarification on that?
We need to ask our county manager to come.
Or county manager, either of our experts.
I think it's like, less than, it's right there.
It's 10% of what the county gets, the municipalities themselves get a portion of that. It does not come out of there.
I think ours is 0.08 or something.
But the amount that the county takes in, we give 10% of that amount to the school district.
The municipalities don't give a portion of theirs, it's just the county.
But it's discretionary, that's something, that's not required in state law, it's optional. But we do that because schools are important, and education is a priority, and student safety is important. That's why 62.4% of the current school resource officer funding burden is borne by the county commission, is taken on by the county commission. We do support safety, we do care, we do support this, and this is, and that's why we're committed to making sure that plane gets off the ground and students are safe. It's just, over the long run, the school district would, would pay that back in the form of an interlocal agreement, so.
How much are you talking?
I think the specifics of the amount would, would have to, once you guys kind of meet and look at what you're looking for, but I think we would, you know, be committed to making sure it happens, but within, you know, reason, obviously. We only, we're very limited and have restrictions, too.
We, you know, the board would have to discuss this when we are meeting and can take action, but, you know, it sounds good, the money would be there, but I'm reluctant to borrow money because our reserves are, what, 3.3 right now? We have been down that slippery slope, and I don't, I don't want to mess with that, but it, on this loan, at some point, it's got to get paid back. And I don't know if you're talking about six months, a year, five years, or whatever, but.
Well, it's my understanding, too, that the challenge of this is it hits suddenly. The tragedy hit, the bill came quickly, and now we're all figuring out what to do. And so the, in that short timeframe, this buys us more time. This gives us the ability to sort out and figure out some of these long-term solutions. But in the short term, you know, we're just saying, we're committed to helping make it happen, but over the long run, you know, there's a lot of fire stations that need to be redone, and that's public safety. There's a lot of, you know, roads and infrastructure. I don't think any of us want to drive around on cobblestone roads. I mean, there's a lot of various aspects of what we do that, this isn't just money that we have sitting aside just waiting to fund this. So it's going to hurt for us, too, but we're committed to being partners in this. But over the long term, the school district would, would pay that back, but would be able to make decisions, policies, decisions to do that. And it's my understanding that policy decisions were made that didn't allow it this, this time around and this quickly, but over the long term, those policy decisions could be made to make the county commission a hole in that, so.
Let me make one comment. I agree with Commissioner Hutchins that.
I agree.
Something's got to give. We have, we must find a source of funds. The millage, as I understand it, would be ineffective for four years. Then we would have to go back again and do the same thing all over again. I wish it, I wish it could be for longer.
It could be.
Can it be?
We, yeah, there's, that's the other part of it. I have every intention, myself, of encouraging all of us to go to Tallahassee, that's an ask.
Okay.
They need to change it for, when it comes to safety.
Because on, on the other hand, with the, you know, over the past year, we've had different people in our county office talk about the need for a millage increase, or to go out for it. All we can do is ask that it be placed on the ballot, and the citizens would vote on it. We would not be raising people's millage.
Right.
I think safety and safety of our students is prime. I mean, hardly a day goes by that you don't see something on TV or in the news about safety in schools. But also, on the other hand, we need a sales tax for the capital things. You're talking about bad roads. We can show you some horror stories in our schools. Air conditioners that are so old, we can't even get the parts for them anymore. We are in sad shape on the operations side. So I don't know what your budget looks like, I haven't studied it, but I know that we are in dire straits on the operational side and on the capital side. You know, the saddest part to this meeting today is when the state passed law and mandated that these resource officers be in every school. It breaks my heart that they didn't put the money with it for this mandate. We would not be sitting here today if they had funded the resource officers in all of our schools. And counties throughout the state of Florida are in the same boat that we're in. And so we've got to figure out some way to do it. And I was looking on the bottom of this sheet, our community, our county, our responsibility, we're all in this together. And on that, I say amen. We're in this together. We all have children, grandchildren, friends and neighbors with kids in our schools. We want our schools to be safe. That is universal throughout this county. I don't think there's a single citizen in this county that doesn't want safe schools for their children. We must figure out a way to do it. It sounds like your hands budgetarily are pretty much tied. We are in bad shape. We have done quite well with Mr. Davis in getting our fund ballots at least back up to so we don't have to hang our heads in shame, but we don't have money floating around. And, you know, we, this 1.5 is right there, but I don't, I don't know what we're going to do. But, you know, if you want, you know, I'll talk to Mr. Davis, if we need to do a special meeting, workshop, to talk about our end to it, I don't know.
So through the chair, I will say that I'm ready and prepared. You tell me when, and we're ready to move the conversation to have a systemic commitment financially to service every one of our schools. You, the school board let me know, and I'm ready to move forward with it. On the other side of it, in order to get it off the ground, I want to be clear that the school board, or ask a question to make certain that the school board doesn't own any capital expenses, because if I'm going to buy the car, then I'm going to own the car. So I want to make certain that when we get to the point, you're going to have to pay the 1.9 million dollars to the sheriff's office, because that comes with a car and everything else, and that would be his property, your property, and not our property. I just want to confirm that.
Let me, let me just kind of get a consensus from the board. Are y'all willing and able to have a special meeting to discuss all this?
I would think we're, we're within enough time to add it to our upcoming agenda to.
You want to do it at the regular board meeting?
So we can take action.
I'd requested a workshop at the last board meeting at the end regarding revenue sources and the need to do just that. If we're looking at 30 officers, I believe you said, next Tuesday, we want them, we need them. We need to get out ahead of all of the other counties in the state.
Yeah.
Because every one of the other school boards in this county, in the state, pardon me, are going to be looking for officers as well.
Okay.
And I am in favor of either a workshop or putting it on the agenda.
I understand a workshop, but my, we are on a time.
Correct.
Because a workshop, you can't take official action, right?
We can't, but we have the workshop. We could do a special meeting.
We could have a workshop followed by a special meeting.
I'm fine with either. I think we are in the time crunch. I think I saw on the news yesterday that Duval County asked for some kind of, they're calling them something.
Safety officer or something, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
I would prefer a workshop, and I can do either also.
My question is, what additional information do you need? Because that would be what a workshop would be for. So if we need additional information, we can have a workshop if there's questions that aren't answered here. But to me, the time is of the essence here, and I'd like to move forward.
Okay.
I guess I feel like there's really two things that we're, we're asking, that we're looking for. We have a probably 2.9 million dollar gap. That's why I was asking about the 800,000, I wasn't clear on that, whether, I mean, it's 2.1 million or 2.9 million, whatever we're looking for. And then going forward to, over, to address Commissioner Hutchings' concern and comments, and I appreciate those, that we're looking at a total of about at least 5.6 million on the sheriff's estimates, but I think that that would be probably closer to 6 million, considering all of our safe school dollars that we would allocate toward that, for that revenue source. So I really feel like there's two different things that we kind of, as a school board, need to take action on, and that's where I was trying to get clarification.
Well, do you want to meet before the first Thursday of the month? That's what I'm trying to find out.
We have our agenda review workshop, would that be an appropriate time to get questions answered, and then we could?
If it's on the agenda, we can then use that as the workshop.
I think, has the agenda already been published for that?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
But the agenda review has up been published for Tuesday.
Has the agenda review been published?
That meeting's on Monday, so.
No.
By the Monday before, which would be this coming Monday, I think we could make adjustments.
Mrs. Bush, that's Monday. We would have to advertise it tomorrow.
That's Monday.
Through the chairs of board, through the chair, as the board wishes, we'll make whatever you expect for us to happen.
Okay, would you want to add it on to the agenda review?
I'm agreeable to that.
Okay.
I would think that the, maybe that we, what we, I guess, no, we could take action at the, at the agenda workshop to add it to our agenda for our May meeting, if we wanted to take action.
Certainly.
We can't take action at a workshop.
Right, that's what I was suggesting, that we then have the opportunity to then put, still put it on that agenda for May.
We got exactly what we wanted to put on the agenda. Okay, we'll do that.
We do have a standing thing on Monday, though.
Excuse me?
So that will extend the meeting, and we've got a standing appointment on Monday.
We, we have to leave by 11:00, and we don't start till 9:00. That's not going, that's not going to give us any time. Do you want to come back and meet that afternoon?
While you guys are looking at that.
We're trying to find the way.
Sure, yeah. In terms of the commission, Commissioner Bowler, what are your thoughts on the interlocal agreement that would basically get them?
If you want to state that.
Some of where they need to be now, and then over the long term? Because obviously, as commission, we're not allowed to talk about this ahead of time, so it'd be great to hear.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a plan. Obviously, that's usually my surprise.
I could start answering for you. You'd like to see a plan?
I like Commissioner, I like Commissioner Hutchings.
Matrix, some numbers.
Yeah. Same, same formula for most problems.
It works.
If you have a plan and you know where you want to go, it's a lot easier to get there. We have, we have some issues here about when the funding streams are coming online. The sheriff needs to move almost immediately to hire, hire the people he needs. We don't need the entire amount of money tomorrow, though, to do that, do we?
No.
Whatever that number is, if you need, need a couple hundred thousand dollars to get this thing off the ground, at least get them started, that's what I want to hear about. I'd also like to hear about if, if, if indeed the school board decides to go for a funding stream, when could that be in place? Let's look at when some of the critical flows have to go. Obviously, we don't have to buy all these police cars tomorrow, and some of these other training issues could be timed so that we can finance this thing over time. I mean, when I build a boat, I don't do it all at once, you know, I do a little piece at a time. And I think that's, that's the kind of plan I'm looking for, let's look for a cash flow plan. I think we could get a lot of this done without, without jumping off the bridge.
Yeah, how much do we need to get this thing going?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
So if we move forward, Tuesday, 30 new employees are going to start employment at 38,000 a year annual salary. And they're going to start Tuesday and start working for the rest of their careers. They will be in a training, they will be in a training setting, field training setting, once they finish two weeks of orientation. Depending upon whether they were direct hired as former school resource officers, tack on another eight to 10 weeks, onto the two weeks, and then they'll be solo, ready to roll on their own. If they weren't school resource officers, two weeks of orientation, and 14 to 16 weeks If they weren't school resource officers, two weeks of orientation and 14 to 16 weeks tacked onto that, you know, whenever that timeframe is. And then they will be barring any rephases, people not making the cut, then those will be the hard timelines, and then those people will be solo. As far as the vehicles, I could even acquiesce and say we won't need the vehicles until the startup of the school year. However, the purchasing, we can't wait till the day before school starts and say, let's buy 30 vehicles and expect 30 vehicles to be outfitted with cages and all of the hardware, equipment, the packages needed to be the emergency vehicle that we need.
Sheriff Daniels, give us a ballpark figure of what you would need to get this going the first month or two. Just a ballpark. We need to know it counts.
That could take us up to July 1st, which is the start of our next budget.
We need a payment plan.
About till July the 1st.
I'm being told we have to purchase the vehicles now.
It takes that long to get them ready?
Do you have to pay for them when you order them?
You gotta pay for them, you gotta wait on them.
Mr. UnderSheriff, if you don't mind just stepping.
Ray Walden, I'm the UnderSheriff. So we have to buy the cars now, because by the time you go through the process of getting them ordered, they get here, we get them outfitted, that takes three and a half to four months. So we have to order them now to have them ready by August.
Is it conceivable we could start the program with the officers without the cars in the backyard?
Can I ask another question on that question? Can you use, I know you said you cycle your cars out every five years. Can they start with, do you have a, like, I know the school district, we have buses that we've cycled out, they still sit on the yard. Are you able to use some of those?
So we have identified every car we can get our hands on. We've got a handful, some beaters that we're keeping that probably need to go. That's a technical term. But we're hanging on to them, because we're trying to do everything we can with what we have. So, but we, at some point, we don't have enough cars to say, because we just don't, our fleet doesn't have a whole lot of fluff.
We keep, you're just, y'all are just not helping us.
So, through the chair, can I say this? I mean, it sounds like if the budget is 4.5, and you look at personnel benefits, it's gonna be around $700,000 for three months from now until July 1 for just personnel with itself. And then it looks like you're gonna have to spend the additional 1.9 million dollars for capital, which is uniforms, equipment, and all that other stuff. So you're, yeah, 2.6, 2.7 million dollars off the start. And that's with benefits, salaries for three months, along with capital outlay needs.
Your operating expenses, because some of that capital doesn't cover your vests and your guns and your ammunition and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't know what operating is defined as. So I mean, like, I don't know what, I don't know, you know, your deal.
Well, Sheriff, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just go for it, ask away. You don't have to run everyone.
And certainly, the car component is probably the largest expenditure in all of that, other than the salaries. But, you know, it seems to me that, you know, we've got a number of different issues going. I think Commissioner Bowles has the right idea. I think it would be better for us to understand what kind of commitment you're looking for us to make if we knew where you were. Okay? We got the 1.55 from the state. We don't even really know when that comes, right?
Through the chair, July 1.
July, so you'll have a...
Oh, that's good.
Okay, so that helps. So now we have a little bit of understanding when that... Obviously, you get that a lot faster than we get our FEMA reimbursement.
So let me, let me clarify, Mr. Davis. So we've got 1.5 starting July 1.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the startup to get us to July 1 is 2.5?
It's 1.641.
I take the rest of my money. Will you stop?
Give us a nickel, okay?
I'm giving you 2.50.
And then you said it would take 2.6 to get this program started. So the difference in that is 1.1. So why don't the county commissioners pony up 1.1, and then we're all, we can get going on this, and then we can figure out how to do the funding?
I think as an interlocal, paid back over time, that could work.
I'm not talking about paying it back. I'm talking about y'all being good citizens working together.
When I go home tonight and I talk to firefighter friends, I think they're gonna ask, why am I giving, you know, funding to the school district? And, I mean, I'm sure they would love a raise. I'm sure that our sheriff's deputies would love raises. I'm sure that the roads that I'm gonna drive on that are dirt would love to be paved. There's lots of needs, and I just don't think I could be a fiscally responsible commissioner and just subsidize a governmental body when they have mechanisms for revenue also.
Can't blame a girl for trying.
Yeah. But I do think we're focused on the short term here. We have to.
I do have some other safety concerns that are not specific to this meeting, to stay on topic, but that, for instance, I know of a specific bus route that just last week, when we had the torrential rains on Monday and Tuesday, we let students off five miles from their house, and they had to walk because a bus couldn't go down their dirt road. So I think that there is an opportunity for us to partner on some things that you do control, you know, to maybe make things safer for our kids on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, we'd love for you guys to pay for some roads if you're wanting to. We have a long, long list.
That's not what I mean.
Sheriff, do you have any discretionary money now that could be used upfront, and that we backfill that in a couple, three months or whatever?
No, sir. To be quite frank, I'm 71 deputies in the hole already, as it is. And that's something that's happened over the course of years. Since 2008, we've been doing more with less. It's 10 years later. At some point, less is gonna get done. So we just have to make the decision, you know, what are we gonna prioritize here?
Isn't our crime rate at an all-time low right now, though?
It may be.
And don't you have about 30%? 30% of the population's in these schools.
Yes, sir. The ratio of, and I'm gonna get into a whole different conversation.
All right.
You don't have the facts on it, I do.
I don't like hearing that stuff. How big is your whole shift during the day? I thought I heard a number at one point of about 36 officers are on patrol duty.
That's about right.
So we're talking about 48 here. We're talking about doubling your staff size, you know. We'd just like a little wiggle here, that's all.
The number of schools. It's 44 schools. Are there 44 schools?
Mr. Chairman.
And you're saying best practice, right? But hey, if the money doesn't get there, you're gonna fund whatever you get funding for, right? So you're not saying...
Yeah, whatever you, whatever money comes up, that's what we'll work with. And everything else, for short, we'll stand up, I will stand up the Guardian program. You just will have to give me the names by July 1. I control the Guardian program.
That's right. Through the chair, Sheriff is correct.
And the board controls the up piece.
Did you have a question, the sheriff? Okay. I just want to make certain that as we continue to move forward and we look at a financial plan from our side that we can present, that I can present to the school board, that you will continue to help us with the other compensation for the initiative that we currently have in our high schools. Because currently, right now, we spend $530,000, and the commission is committed, has been committed for the last couple of years, with taking on the other portion of that. Will that still be a commitment from the county moving forward?
Mr. Davis, I think honestly, if we're going to be considering a millage, that's really not a fair question to the commissioners, because that's, if we're identifying or, you know, asking the voters to identify a certain revenue stream for this specific need, then my assumption would be that's how we meet that need, that we wouldn't be dependent, it wouldn't be an interlocal thing anymore.
So through the chair, I don't disagree. I was just talking, if we decide not to get approved and getting to a point where the community didn't approve the additional tax, would we be willing to continue to partner with us in that manner? I'm just trying to think about all perspectives. I'm not trying to lock you in.
Yeah, I think the focus is here now in making sure that when school year happens next year, that deputies are in schools. I once heard a quote on Vision, it said, you know, vision is great, but to the man on a dark highway, the next few feet is most important. And I think that's where we're at at this point. We gotta focus on just figuring out how to fund it in the immediate. And then, and that's why I think the interlocal loan is probably not the correct term. I'm not a financial expert, but just an interlocal that would guarantee that over time, the county commission recoups that funding, but it would allow the school district to move forward. That's what I'm talking about.
We could call it an advance on the money that we're giving them.
And it wouldn't impact your fund balance, because, and that's the key, because I understand that the fund balance is a concern, and that 3% is important. And we want that the school district to be able to maintain control of the school district. We don't want Tallahassee to come in and any of that. So I understand that piece of it, and Dr. Lugatko is, you know, smiling, because I, and we're all trying to help, but at the same time, we also want to be responsible for the county commission side, too.
And through the chair, appreciate it. We'll never be in that situation. We definitely appreciate you working hard over that workshop.
Let me get back and address the school board members. It's Monday, the 23rd, at 1:30 or 2 o'clock. Good. Could we meet to discuss all this? Do you prefer 1:30 or 2 o'clock? Let's say 2 o'clock.
Either one is fine for me.
How about you, Ms. Condon?
I guess that's fine. It's just two trips to Green Cove. I drive a long way.
Go to Sweet Sensations and have a long lunch.
We're going to be, we're going to be there already in the morning. I don't see why we can't add it.
Two of the board members mentor.
I understand that, but this is preeminent. I mean, this has to be a priority for us, and we have a forum, frankly. So if we need to operate that way, I just, I don't think it's a fair...
I would certainly appreciate it if you could wait until 2 o'clock. It means a lot to my mentee.
I understand that.
I think I would be letting her down. I don't want to do that when we can meet.
You could bring her there, and she could see the meeting.
I don't think so. She missed food then. Hey, testing's coming up. I don't want her to miss food.
1:30 is not a problem.
1:30, 2 o'clock? It doesn't matter?
Let's go earlier so that we don't have to do two trips. We can work that.
Yeah, have a long lunch, yeah.
I'll do whatever the majority wants to do.
So 1:30?
Aye.
And this will be in the same meeting where we, in the same room where we have the agenda review? If there's a problem, Ms. Bush, let us know. But this way, we can get this discussed and...
And just so I understand, we're just, what, the reason that we're having a second meeting is to decide whether or not to put this on our regular agenda?
More or less, and what we want to put on the agenda, and maybe have some discussion about the millage, the pros, the cons, the...
Yeah, I would like to have information from...
Sounds like your attorney is wanting to...
Mr. Dagada, would you like to address the board?
Waving.
I'm just recommending what we can do is place on the, my name is David Dagada, I'm the school board attorney.
Mr. Otto, keep your comments to yourself. He can do whatever he needs to.
There's no problem to simply add to the board's agenda for the workshop on Monday. Just add to it the discussion that the board obviously wants to have. And then you can reserve if there's, if it's necessary to go beyond 11:00 or whatever the stop time is. It then goes over until 1:30 or whatever it is that the board decides, as far as the, you know, to reconvene the workshop.
You mean, so what you're saying is if Mr. Davis' agenda review doesn't last the full two hours, then we could go ahead and start this meeting?
If he doesn't have his PowerPoint slides, I guess.
Just put this at the beginning of the agenda.
And that was just to clarify, that was Mr. Dagada, who is the attorney for the Clay County School Board, just to clarify if the public wasn't aware.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Sheriff still has a problem.
Yes.
And it's because he's hiring people on April 24th. He needs additional monies to get himself to July 1st.
That's next Tuesday.
Right. I think Sheriff, I think that's what you were alluding to when you...
Through the chair, I was gonna say, I'm still in a quandary. I thought maybe they were having their meeting to decide if there was gonna be funding or not. I still need to let 30 people know if they're gonna start on Tuesday, or we'll talk to you soon. Stay tuned. For the sake of the newest numbers, what you need effective May 1st is 3 million, 14,625.
Now, Sheriff, is that operational or capital included in that?
That's to get us going.
That's ordering the big calls.
Could you repeat that number again?
I had that 2.6 get to 3 million.
Because I didn't come up with 2.6, somebody out there in the audience did.
Well, here's the sheriff's...
That's 1 month of salary.
All right, can you just clarify who you are, just for the record?
I'm sorry, Elise, Chief Financial Officer over the sheriff's office.
When this becomes a Netflix series.
Is 1 month of salary plus all of the expenses in capital, because we've got to start buying that upfront. And there's already a backlog, and, you know, because every, all other sheriff's offices are going through buying laptops, so we need to get those all ready in place for the start of the school year. So that is 1 month of salary plus all of the expenses and capital upfront, and then we split the salaries by month.
And Elise, will you tell them what CIP is eligible and capital is 1.8?
The...
Restate what she said.
Out of the 1.9, 1.8 was CIP.
Just to clarify, the county manager asked her to clarify what was CIP in that, just to...
So out of the 1.9 million of capital, only 1.8 was CIP eligible. What does that mean for the citizens, please? Meaning with the half-cent sales tax with that revenue.
Capital improvement that has to have a five-year lifespan, correct?
That means yours, your half-cent sales tax, not our half-cent sales tax.
We don't have that.
I don't think you guys have one.
You don't have one right now.
We don't have one.
I know, I was trying to clarify for the public.
If you do get one, we'll take 10% of it.
I think, I think one of the, I think one of the problems here is that even, I mean, I'm, I think I'm a pretty intelligent person, and I'm having trouble following all of the math. And I think that, you know, understanding if we need to have a, ultimately, I understand that this is the school district's mandate from the legislature to have, to, let's see, I'll read it. Shall partner with law enforcement agencies to establish or assign one or more safe school officers at each school facility within the district by implementing any combination of the following options, which best meets the needs of the school district. It's the SRO. The safety officers, if we commissioned our own police force, or the Guardian program, which I would add that I have not been contacted by any school employee who says they would be willing to go through a Guardian program if we approved one. So I think we'd have a hard time meeting that with that. So we really only have three options in this. And so if we need to add an agenda item on for a special, you know, onto a special meeting to approve that we would pay for it, we don't know how we'd pay for it, but I guess we could say, yes, we'd pay for it. We're kind of in a quandary, because we have to put them in for 18, 19 school year, and we just have to. And if we, oh, by the way, with the new law on the, Dr. Kemp had, oh, no, relocated, but with the OPAGA studies that are required for a referendum, I'm not even sure we could have something on the ballot for our voters for the primary election, maybe the general.
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't have a timeframe because of the state laws changing on the OPAGA studies that you have to do when you're going to do a special referendum. You have...
Do you mind coming up and just clarifying, just so that we have that on the record?
Didn't we get a letter on that today? I believe we got an email about that today.
I'm Dr. Mike Kemp, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. A couple of things. The new OPAGA study does impact any district that's considering going out for a sales tax. So therefore, that's specific to the sales tax, that we have to conduct an audit, specifically amount of time, almost a three-month minimum requirement for them to get on the OPAGA books for the audit. And that's just new. That's right out of the new Florida statute of legislation. I will say this, we do have, we currently, from a needs assessment, from a capital perspective, I know everybody has issues, but we have over $282 million in need right now that has resulted over time because of just deferred, just not having the funds available, less state funding and things of the nature. So I do appreciate the conversation, and we are, we certainly are all in the same boat. So if we can work together to make sure that we can find what we can, whether it's through the existing agreement that we have that is discretionary. Mr. Rollins, you mentioned the 10%. We looked at 8.81, about 8.81, and this county is about 91.19. So that 8.81 generates somewhere between 1.7 million to 2.5 million dollars that discretionarily you guys give through an agreement with the school system. You know, the Clay County citizens are already paying that tax, when you think about that. So when you just round the numbers down, and 91% is already coming to the county, and 9% about is going to the, to the school system, you know, maybe, just as a suggestion, maybe we could look at restructuring that agreement to pay for qualified expenses that could free up some of the funding that we could use in other ways to support salaries, because you're so locked on that sales tax money, and it is restricted. So by referendum, so you can't use it for operational expenses, you can't use it for you can't use it for the salaries and things of that nature. But just as a suggestion, you know, the citizens are already paying, the, the, settled penny tax to the, to the district for 30 years, I mean, to the county for 30 years. And currently, that structure is about 9% to 91% going to the county. So, just Mike, just throwing it out there for conversation, suggestions, you could look at it, maybe the board can look at that in the workshop as well. We do, even so, we need to pursue our own revenue streams, I 100% agree with you on that. We are limited by what we can do, you know, there's an old saying, that authority without capacity is futility. You know, we all have the authority, but if we do not have the capacity to get it done, it's a futile effort. But from a revenue perspective, at least on the capital side, from the operations standpoint, we're $282 million in need right now. If we did a $20 million sales tax down the road, that would, not only without growth, it's looking at $250 million. That would even meet the need that we have right now, the facilities, to make our facilities relevant and current. So, we'll discuss with the superintendent and the board to try to figure out what else we can do on our part. I would just ask the county to consider, and I'm thankful for the 9%, the 8.81%, I'm thankful for that, because that goes a pass through directly for technology and some things of that nature. But since we're already paying that tax, maybe we can look at the difference of the distribution between 91% and the 9% to take care of the children of Clay County.
And, yeah, I see Commissioner Hutchings and then Commissioner Bowles after that.
So, is the OPAGA study, did you say that that is with regard to millage increase?
No, ma'am, the OPAGA study is, it's in, it's in relation to the sales tax. We have to do that prior to any consideration of putting a sales tax referendum out. We have to approve financial solvency in those areas.
I couldn't believe it.
OPAGA sales tax.
And I apologize for that, leading that the wrong way.
Nothing prohibits you from doing, doing the ad ver lorem increase though, right?
Well, I'd like to call up our attorney, because she's looked into that for us and worked with the supervisor of elections.
And everyone, if you would, just state who you are, just so everyone watching is aware, because I know we're doing musical chairs right now, so...
Courtney Graham, County Attorney. Um, yes, I spoke with not only our own supervisor of elections, but Monroe County. And as long as we, or the school board, would get the information to the supervisor election by June the 22nd, then it could be on the August 28th primary.
You're talking about the millage?
Correct, yeah, just the millage.
And so, one more step in between there is they pass it, then it comes to us for a, and I know all too well, ministerial vote. And then it goes on to the supervisor elections by June 22nd.
Correct.
And if it goes and passes in August, then Mr. Suggs would put it on, no, not Mr. Suggs, Mr. Weeks, through the tax collector, would put it on the...
Trim.
Trim notice, thank you.
Truth in millage.
There's something about, and this is a very specific statute for the school district, and there's something about it that I believe that you couldn't have your effective date until January the 1st, 2019, which is what Monroe County, I believe, is doing. And, you know, they just suggested that you work closely with the tax collector and the property appraiser to facilitate that.
Okay, so that means we could have a revenue stream by January 1st?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm gonna ask the county manager a real nuts and bolts question here, put you on the spot. Do we have capacity in our CIP money to cover that portion?
The 1.8 that Elise talked about, I think there's definitely in what we have current year, because of some of the grants we've gotten through the state, we have to unfront that money, but I think we can handle the 1.8. We may have to move a few things around, but I think from a cash flow standpoint, we could do that.
So, we can free that up and put that to a vote at our next meeting, so that he knows he has the money to order the vehicles.
If you look at his, at what the sheriff submitted, all that that says capital, though, is not eligible for the CIP. So, I just wanna be clear, anything attached to the vehicle is eligible, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that we could get done next week, so that you could place that order. And then you have money that's available July 1 that could help with picking up the payroll and soft costs.
Yes, ma'am, to the chair, we do get one, we do get the 1.5, turning the microphone off. 1.6.
1.891.
Go ahead, 1.641, go ahead, here we go. We do get that amount of money, what he said. Oh, he's trying to take my money.
He's not gonna leave us not one penny.
I know, he's trying to take, I seen him at Jim the night. But we do get that, we do get over payments, so we'll have to work throughout the year, we'll have to work with the board to make certain that we can tap some additional resources to make that available.
Well, I think it's entirely doable, and, and I appreciate your giving us the urgency, because as elected bodies, we tend to, oh, we'll do that at the next meeting, we'll have a workshop. So, I think urgency is important, and as long as we're all paying attention to the timeline and collaborating, I don't see any reason why we can't get this done.
So, so are we telling the sheriff to go ahead and hire his 30 people on Tuesday?
You have to tell him that, that's your vote.
Through the chair, can we make certain that we have our opportunity on Monday?
Yeah.
Before that is clear, because I don't wanna give, because the sheriff's like me, he's gonna move immediately, we're fast workers.
But that has to be, for us to take action, it has to be a special meeting advertised tomorrow, because we don't normally take action.
Yes, ma'am, through the chair, Ms. Bush, she'd ready to rock and roll.
So, Commissioner Hutchings, can I ask one question, and maybe it's not really directly to you, maybe it is to Ms. Graham? But if, if it doesn't have an effective date until January 1 of 19, we actually wouldn't see revenue from that until people pay their property taxes in November of 19, is that correct?
Courtney, I asked that question too.
And that's why I think that the commission, at least in a broad sense, is committed to figuring some of the short-term stuff out, but long-term would wanna be made whole, because of the many priorities. We have $300 million in road construction over the next 10 years, according to the study and multiple other...
And I could foresee a gap, and that's why I wanted to clarify that.
Well, when you do your calculation on what are you gonna go for for millage, you can put in that calculation what needs to be repaid back to get you started.
But we, I believe we are limited to one mill, we can only...
Oh, you'll do fine at one mill, you'll bring in $11 million, yeah.
Well, and I'm not sure that we would go for the whole thing, but I think...
For Monday's workshop.
We're not familiar with, we don't do this so often.
Dr. Legutco told me one mill would bring in 10 million. So, is that, are you still saying that?
Still makes up the 4.5, so.
But still, we could pay you back a little bit if, if fast, if...
And I have a question for our superintendent. Mr. Davis, when you prepare for Monday's workshop, have these calculations there for us showing how much it would be, and also find out when we would start receiving it. Ms. Condon had a very good point, it's possible we may not start receiving until November of 2019. So, we'll need to know when we receive it, and also, how much would the financial impact to the homeowners be?
Oh, I've got that answer.
100.
$15 per year, per person.
So, through the chair.
What size home?
For one mill.
Through the chair, and I went back, and I'm gonna say that I gave Ms. Studdard inaccurate information. For that, me to say that is very hard, because I usually do not speak unless it's the...
Would you repeat that in case someone missed it?
9.9%. I was looking at a different referendum, I was in my mind, but I believe in, through the chair, and I wanna make sure my, my, Dr. Legutco confirms, I believe it's gonna be around $100.
For the average house of 150,000 value.
100,000, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, when we did the quarter mill...
How much did you say?
$100.
100, that's a little different than 15.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be a whole mill.
That's the quarter mill a mill.
Either way, it's ultimately the voters who will decide that, you guys are, you know, placing it on the ballot for them to decide, so...
And I guess the other thought is, if we instruct the sheriff to go forward and it doesn't pass, now we've got 40 new cars.
We're on the line. Through the chair, we're on the line for a lot of money.
And you're not getting one.
Then Commissioner Hutchings and I are out on the corner with a tin cup.
There you go.
I mean, goodness.
I'll bring my grandkids, they can perform.
And through the chair, that is a possibility, I mean, it's a point, I do believe that this community will rally behind us, I feel strong about it. However, I will have options Monday for you to review, a number of options. You see what Duval County just took on and potentially took on, I will add that as an option for your lens and for your review.
Mr. Superintendent, I don't believe that we can, reading the article that was in the newspaper that Commissioner Sello let me read just now, that I think that they can do this because they have their own police force. And I would add that they're making $12 to $12.75 an hour plus benefits. And right now, in Keystone Heights, you can deliver pizzas for Domino's for 17 an hour, so...
Would exactly be, there wouldn't be lining up.
When you have experience with that, you kinda were involved with running that on at some level, so you understand that.
Yeah, I do, and I'll have models, just to give you options of what you'll have, so you can make a firm decision. That way, I feel better about what, what's on your plate, and that you got every scope of the work.
Well, is anybody gonna generate a cash flow plan?
Excuse me?
A cash flow plan as to what, what we gotta spend where, the plan I talked about.
Yeah.
And maybe the sheriff, you could sharpen your pencil and see what you can do, and we can get the two meshed together and come out with the best plan here.
And I hear you saying you're gonna do whatever you get funded for, right?
Really my option to do, through the chair, is to either call 30 people and tell them they're gonna be hired Tuesday, or tell them they're not gonna be hired Tuesday.
Right, that's fair.
If for this body to say, go ahead and hire them, that's coming out of this year's budget that I'm not prepared to spend on 30 additional bodies. So, unless there's 30 bodies worth of money coming from somewhere, please tell me tonight, so I know what to do.
We can't take, none of us can take action at this meeting right now. The school board can take some action on Monday, but we could...
Understanding.
But the quickest we could tell you anything would be after the meeting on Monday. I don't know about the county commissioner.
30 people who are planning to be here at 8:00 in the morning on Tuesday, I, tell them they're not gonna be hired.
Can you interview them, interview them and tell them the start date is so and so?
I'm gonna tell them they can't be hired until we come to a decision here, I can't, I can't go on a dice throw with the taxpayers' dollars.
Could we postpone the interviews two weeks?
We're gonna have to, that's what I'm saying, just tell them to just...
When unfortunately we can't take action.
We gotta stop it all.
We can't take action at a workshop, so...
And Mrs. Studdard, if we're going to take action Monday, we need to advertise a special meeting.
That's what I asked for earlier.
She, Ms. Bush discussed it with our attorney, Mr. Dagada, and all systems are go. They've got it covered.
Very good, through the chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question here? And I, I'm sorry, I keep bringing it back to the sheriff and his immediate need, but, and all these other things are great, but if, you know, we're gonna get people in the, in the school August 16th, when school opens the doors, he, this gentleman has got to act tomorrow. He's in competition with 66 other counties, plus the general market, which is in Florida, 3.1% unemployment. So, he's gonna have to dig really hard and really fast to get some folks. What do we need, April and May, and a monthly salary? I, I think it goes back to Commissioner Hutching, Commissioner Bowles' plan in terms of, you know, what do we need to make sure that we're covered? And if, if, you know, we wanna move forward, we, we need to know that that money's already been identified. Obviously, we can't wait till July 1st to pay people. So, does your, does Elise have that for us, for a monthly payroll?
Yes, 374,625 per month. 374,625 monthly.
And that's just the salaries?
Salaries and benefits.
That's salaries and benefits.
And benefits, okay.
Okay. And then, then we know we need 1.8 for capital as far as cars and anything that goes in the car.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we meet on Tuesday, you all meet Monday, and you could do a special meeting and vote that day, so...
And bring us back options that we could then look at.
Right, because I think we're gonna need to know your position before we can take a vote. So, the order, I'm saying the order is well done and timely. And then I would say to you that by Wednesday morning, or after the meeting Tuesday night, you'll know the answer. So, you could move it up to Thursday from Tuesday, would that be okay?
And county manager, if you can just place an item on the agenda for us that we can discuss this.
Right, before the school board gets their 1.8, 1.55, 1.641, whatever the number is...
Tomorrow it'll be a different.
Whatever, whatever that's gonna be, we need $751,250 for the sheriff to get through...
750?
May, June. To get to first, right? What do you mean now?
About the cars.
Well, that's a different, that's, that's, 1.8 is capital, that's different.
That, that would compromise, I would imagine.
Yeah, philosophically, I have no problem, and I think...
The 1.5 that we're allowed to provide to anyone is not effective till July 1.
That's right, and through the chair, we...
So, May and June, we can't, there's nothing I can do.
Yeah, we cannot, we don't have funding, nor, nor are we, nor are we allowed to purchase services that are gonna not be in our schools.
I understand.
I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Superintendent, and I understand, that's what I'm pointing out. There's a shortfall there before we even get to some of the monies.
Absolutely, sir, yes, sir.
So, we're trying to accomplish this, we have all grand plans of introducing things to the public, which is eventually where it's gonna go. But to get this gentleman, our sheriff, to where he needs to be hiring and paying people to be trained and in the school system before you get your July 1 monies, there's $752,000 that has to come along with the 1.8 million for the, for the cars. That's, that's what I'm concentrating on. And then, obviously, we, we have to move forward from, from that point. So, philosophically, I have no problem, you know, paying for a capital. It makes it a little bit easier for us, because our operating expenses, you know, are tapped. But the capital we do have, we'll have to postpone some projects, and those folks that were involved with those projects, hopefully, will understand we're doing it for the, you know, public good. So, I, I think we can, we can handle that, like Commissioner Hutchings indicated. But it's that payment of the salaries that we'll have to figure out, either whether it's jointly or individually, or alone, or advanced payment, or whatever. So, I'm just trying to get numbers in my own mind, so I know where we need to go for the sheriff come next Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday.
Let me ask you this, you can use your capital money to pay salaries?
No, no, no.
No, 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 he was talking about the...
Talking about vehicles and, and capital.
Okay. But I was thinking, we can't do that.
Yeah, no.
We have the same rules on that, pretty much.
Yes, we have, we have an auditor who would not permit us to do that.
Maybe what we can do is have the superintendent work with the county manager and see if we can do a 50-50 for the May-June expenses. And then the money comes in, because we don't have it, we're gonna have to pull it from somewhere else, just like you don't. But if we partner in that and cover those two months, and then the money comes in, pay it back to your fund as well as ours.
So, we need to come up with about 375,000.
So, through the chair, we can look, I can tell you that, I mean, I'm not, I will do our best.
Well, at least you have something to work with in terms of the short term, and then, you know, that sorta gives Commissioner Bowles a little, at least a pencil version of his, his cash flow plan, so we can move forward on that.
So, and through the chair as well, and I know, and I guess that's the answer for the sheriff, so if, if we have funding that we can find, which I'm gonna be openly, honestly, it's gonna be tremendously difficult, is the sheriff begins to hire, sheriff, what's the training time that, that, because if I'm gonna pay for service, I want some people in my, if I'm gonna pay for it now, I'd like to have some people in my school as soon as I start paying for the service openly, I'm just being business perspective.
It's the two months, right, sheriff, is that more?
12 to 18 weeks, just depends upon whether there are direct hires or not. And, and so, the, the 374, just understand that that is just salaries and benefits. And, and the capital, and operating expense total out to $3,014,625.
We don't want to hear that.
I know, I don't wanna say it.
All right, what, it sounds like we have at least some progress, we're kinda starting to tighten the focus in a little bit. Any other commissioners have any comments or thoughts? Any other school board members, superintendent?
I would like to say something, I just wanna thank everybody for coming and having the conversation. I'm not happy with the outcome of it, but I appreciate that everybody came with an open mind, and we are trying to resolve the problem that we have of keeping our community safe and our children safe, because as we know, that's the most important thing here, is the safety of our students, so I wanna say thank you to everyone.
And on behalf of all the school board members, we appreciate that you agreed to this roundtable discussion. I think it was very beneficial, I'm delighted that Green Cove and Orange Park were here, because you're a vital part of, of our county. And I think that we will certainly find a way to do this, it's not going to be fun. We may have to cut in areas that we really don't want to, but we must keep our kids safe, and we must follow this, you know, obey this mandate. And, you know, and every time that I have been to Tallahassee over the last few years, I have said, please, no, no unfunded mandates. And if we just keep, we need to keep saying, no unfunded mandates. You know, I loved getting these new laws, but I would like to see some green dollars come with it, because this not only puts Clay County in a bad shape, it puts all the counties in the state of Florida in a terrible position. But I feel like we can all come together and solve this, because we all have the same goal, and that's to protect our students. With that, I will...
I would just say that it's not unfunded, it's underfunded, and the directive, the directive from Tallahassee is clear. We, as we're building our budget for 2018-19 as a school district, we pay for this first.
Yeah, let me ask a question here.
That directive is clear.
And what happens if we don't do this? What's, what's the legal ramification here?
That's a liability in a major way.
Through the chair, I would say it's gonna be kinda mirror what we have in class size amendments. So, we have to meet certain thresholds with class sides and by grade bands, and if you don't, then you're penalized financially. So, I believe that this will have a financial impact on us in reference to if we don't comply with it.
It doesn't now, the bill does not have a penalty. But I will say that I'm not willing to decide which school doesn't get resource officer.
Well, I hear you there, but I, I got 10 bucks that says that not every, every one of the 67 counties in, in the state of Florida is gonna make this goal. I don't know that, but we're gonna make it.
And I also don't believe that every, that having an officer in every school will necessarily protect every child, but it's, it's a step in the right direction, and I can't sleep well at night not knowing that.
It's the best, it's the best we're gonna do.
We, safety is just, it's everything when it comes to our kids. If they don't feel safe, you know, it's, it's very interesting if you walk into our schools and start talking to some of our children about how they feel about safety, and, and some of the, the comments within our school district, and that Mr. Davis heard at the program that was done on Channel 4 in Jacksonville with other school districts' children, but on what they feel like will keep them safe. And that's just, that is what I think about at night, what keeps me up at night. So, there's nothing more important than our safety, the safety of our kids.
I agree, I could say this, I, I wish it did have some teeth to it. Because every other law in the book says, if you violate this law, the penalty is XYZ. That would be, don't fund the program, SRO program, don't stand up a guardian program equals get off the podium and turn around, because you're going to jail. But it doesn't have those kinda...